Festerston? What? Okay, we'll have to wait for one moment. Stand by, that's right.
No, don't.
I have to sit like the devil, do not encourage.
Government needs to be more light.
You guys weren't here when you saw the bag. We'll get back to money. I think it was a bag of nail and screws. That bag of money that you bought that one time.
Those bolts washers.
This is it. And he's relating somewhere with money or something.
It's time to change. You have a good memory, Dr. Thompson. Like a trap.
She's coming.
Technical difficulty.
Do the technical difficulties.
Don't worry, folks, this is just part of our well. Scratchy, might have to go back to the cassette.
Yeah, we actually do. Here we go. Yeah, I'll start. Okay. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerston? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for invocation by Councilmember Jerem.
By Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand today at special prayer for a really neat young man, Dan Grant, who worked as a volunteer tirelessly to help me get elected, who is recently diagnosed with a rare form of brain tumor and needs all your prayers. And the world's a better place because of people like Dan Grant and his family. So, it's this Christ our Lord.
City Clerk's certified publication on daily record. On December 9th, notes for pre-council regularly council meeting, December 13th, 2011. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall legislative chambers.
Mr. Festerston has got a group here we'd like to recognize today.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to just recognize Matt Madara and the Creighton Prep Young Republicans that are here today visiting city council. They want to take a look at our offices and get a little tour and also witness our meeting here this afternoon. So, we appreciate their interest in city government and appreciate them being here.
Gentlemen, there'll be a short quiz after the meeting, so. Real short. Good afternoon and welcome. This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Thank you.
Zoning ordinance on final rating and planning board attachments will take items from five through nine. It's one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located at 404 South 108th Court from DR and GO to DR Development Reserve District. Six is ordinance to rezone to GO General Office District portions of which property lie within the flood fringe and floodway. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Seven is resolution to plumb our platent titled "Christ Community Church" is hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eight is resolution that the replat transmitted here with entitled "Christ Community Church" is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And nine is special use permit application is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number five, six, seven, eight, and nine begin now. Are there any proponents?
Dean Jaeger with Thompson, Dresen, and Dornar representing Christ Community Church on the replat. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's a combination of two of a lot and the unplatted portion that the church is on so that the church can continue with their master plan and construction and expansion. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerston? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
They're past seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due no means being held December 27th and January 3rd. Agenda item number 10 should be laid over four weeks to January 10th. Liquor item number 11. Monis G. 5051 South 108th Street. Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Michael Montgomery, 5051 South 108th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. I'm open to any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerston? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 12, the X Lounge, 1604 Northwest Radial Highway. Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
I start. My name is Candace Payne, 5513 North 37th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, I just wanted to wish you well, Candace, and see that you're venturing out. I'm excited for you and I hope you do a good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerston? Gurnett? Mr. President? Approved, seven to zero. Item number 13, Currys, 1028 South 74th Plaza. Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Ray Kraus, 14715 Stone Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68116. Here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray? Do we have a second? We do. Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerston? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 14, Shucks Fish House, 1911 Leavenworth Street. Class I liquor license, new application, new location. You have communications from opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Greg Lindberg, 17305 Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68118. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Greg, I just, you know, there was one person that wrote in in opposition. I don't think that person quite understood your business plan. But as I understand it, you operate the wholesale and retail outlet for fish on Leavenworth, the restaurant in West Omaha. You're going to actually bring a restaurant to Leavenworth.
Yes.
Similar model as you do out by big price.
Yes.
So, I just want to tell you, I think that'll be a welcome addition to the area. There had been another restaurant in the area that left town and look forward to your business being a bright spot on that.
Thank you.
That area. So, I wish you well and I make a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerston? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 15, Snack Attack, 2938 North 108th Street. Package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Andrew Collins with Erickson and Cedarstrom. I represent the applicant, McCombs Enterprises. My client's also here. We're here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerston? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 16, DC Saloon, 610 South 14th Street. Request permission to appoint Anthony Terende, manager of the present class C liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents?
I'm Anthony Terende, 1050 South 32nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68105. And I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerston? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 17, Benson Kino, 6553 Ames Avenue. Class I liquor license, new application, new location, and communications opposing.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Andre Lewis. I live at 346 Martin Avenue. And what I'm here for today is for to speak on behalf of the actual place and what it means for them to be there and, I mean, if liquor's involved, for it to actually be passed because I really need this as well as a lot of people in the community, even though things have happened at this place. But the step that this guy is trying to make will help if you all give him a chance. I know chances have been given and some have been let down. But for what I believe in, the safety that he's, the steps he's trying to take into making it a safe place is like above and beyond anything that's needed because safety is a main concern. If you was to invite anyone to your house for any reason and something happened, it was a victim of random gunfire, you couldn't prevent that. But you know you live in a safe neighborhood. But you can take steps to prevent things. And I just, I'm just speaking on behalf because it means so much for me for this place to exist.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Morgan McGough, 4539 North 36th Avenue. I pretty much stand in more so as a neutral ground representative, executive director for EIE. I would like to make a brief statement. EIE supports change. We support new innovative ways to come about that change. And it's interesting because people think that our community will never change. We are not in direct support of a bar, particularly a liquor license, nor Mr. Roethlisberger. However, we are in support of a safe business and opportunities that make sense when the right changes, actions, and purpose is behind it. We are in support of no longer allowing the minority to speak for the majority of our community. We understand many organizations thrive off the exploitations of North Omaha, of the North Omaha community. As long as there is violence, they have a program. As long as they are contributing factors to the statistics, they have a stance. One thing we get to see in this entire struggle to relay the message is anyone to stand up and say that enough is enough. I am a citizen of North Omaha. I am not destructive. I am not a criminal. I can't enjoy myself with a large crowd of my peers without ignorance. And just like the city council men and women, the mayor, the senators, and everyone else we voted into office is going to take time, the proper organization of resources, and some trial periods for them to get it right. As with any other organization or individual, EIE will support plans put in place that make sense, that will provide an opportunity to prove that it can be done right. With the right people, having the right discussions, for the right reasons, the right things can happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? If there are any other proponents after this gentleman, if you would line up, please, here in the aisle so we could kind of move things along. Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name's Jeff Roethlisberger. I'm here just to answer questions and then address the two letters of people who wrote in against the liquor application. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
All right, can I address the two letters?
Go ahead.
This one here dated 12/7/11 is to Buster and Pete. Says the following observations and the devastating impact that this previous liquor license has had upon the surrounding neighborhood at the same address approximately five years ago. She's talking about something five years ago. And then I went onto the back and it says, "The neighborhood tried to work with him, but it's progressively gotten worse until the establishment was closed down and illegal liquor was," I guess confiscated from the premise. I think she's talking about Cartier's. And the other letter is from Robert and Corinne Miller, which we met them at the hall and they had voiced their concerns at the time. This was years ago. I don't know if you guys remember this, Pete and Ben. And what we have to do here is, I'm not asking for you to vote for me. I'm not asking for you to vote for the building. I'm asking for some type of a study to be done on what I'm proposing because I've been through a lot with this place and I know it will work. I've had to go through a long, difficult training process. I do apologize. I'm not very articulate. I get really mad at the circumstances. But I think at the end of the day, everybody wants the same thing, which is a safer community. And I'm 100% confident that people gathering under the right circumstances will help. We don't have a situation now where, I'll give you an example, jazz music. Where does jazz music thrive in our community? I mean, I can't think of a place. I mean, there's lots of things I can do and I want to take it slow. I don't want, even if it's not approving me for a license, what I really want to do with the place, regardless of what I think its highest and best use is, is basement, is lounge, limited to 250. Upstairs is a restaurant and that side room is Kino. And then what we're doing by getting rid of any activity upstairs after midnight is now we're down to 250 people. And then you take those 250 and instead of having them all leave at 2:00 in the morning, what we're doing is if we allow them to stay to eat breakfast, now you only have 100 people leaving. Okay, the ID scanner system, no one's going to sign up to go to jail. So, with that system, we're eliminating 90% of the people who would be a problem coming in. Membership, it's, they're going to be on Facebook to be a member. If they're on Facebook, we can track who's talking to who, what the chatter is, and it's just a different situation. I'm not asking you to vote for me today. I'm just asking that somebody actually really look at it and figure out if I'm telling the truth or not. This is not a ploy to get a license. Since the Kino King was closed, I feel that the violence has increased in the last year. And all I want you to do is think about it this way. We had a year, that very first year, we had 400 people leaving Friday, Saturday night. Not one incident report for a year. We were doing okay. Okay? And all I want people to understand is that's a lot of people. And we were doing fine and it can be better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
I'm Captain Scott Gray, Northwest Precinct, Omaha Police Department. Also with me is Lieutenant Matt Lippel, Northwest Precinct. We're here to answer questions regarding this location.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon, Honorable President and Council. My name is Liz Moldenhauer. I live at 2345 North 64th Street and I am the president of the Benson Neighborhood Association. I am here to protest the liquor license for Benson Kino with the owner, under the ownership of Jeffrey Roethlisberger. Mr. Roethlisberger has had two previous businesses at this location. First, the Clayborne Center Rental Hall in Omaha Kino King, which has been a sports bar and grill. These businesses have had multiple occurrences of violence that have plagued the neighborhood for years. The applicant has stated that he will install a metal detector and an ID scanner. These ideas, along with others that he has proposed, have been brought up previously and yet violence still existed. Mr. Roethlisberger has been given many chances to make changes. Yet those changes never made a difference. The violence still occurred. Now, Mr. Roethlisberger is asking for another chance. In the business plan that he submitted to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission and the City of Omaha, there is a sentence that states, "The top level of the premises was previously operated as a sports bar and grill without any incident." Ladies and gentlemen, the neighbors have not been here previously because there haven't been any incidents. You did not vote to deny this liquor license because there hadn't been any previous instances. And the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission did not renew their liquor license because there weren't any instances. I ask you to deny this liquor license. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Afternoon, Margie Magnuson, 4151 Davenport. I'm here on behalf of Alcohol Impact Coalition. The Alcohol Impact Coalition is a neighborhood coalition of 15 neighborhoods now. We stand in opposition with the Benson neighborhood to this new application for the Benson Kino for liquor license. The business owner, Mr. Roethlisberger, has come before you in the past seeking licenses for the Clayborne Center and Kino King, businesses operating at the same location. Both of these past businesses have created safety problems for the neighborhood and each of these business venues created a drain on police resources trying to handle the numerous calls of service for fights, shots fired, and other safety issues. As with the past applications, Mr. Roethlisberger had made promises to the city council and to the neighborhood that this venue would be different. But given the past record of broken promises to the neighbors, they have no faith that there will not be a repeat of these same problems. Neighbors want good businesses in their neighborhood, but they also want to feel safe. Neighbors want a good quality of life for their families, but they should not feel that they have to put up with public nuisances caused by a poor-run business. The two previous businesses owned and managed by this, by Mr. Roethlisberger did just that. Make neighbors feel unsafe and their clientele caused public nuisances for the surrounding areas. We hope that the city council will take these past problems at the business into consideration and deny this new application. Residents in this neighborhood have the right to have a safe and peaceful neighborhood and to raise their families. And these ongoing problems only cause disinvestment and diminish the quality of life issues for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Yeah, Council, my name is Jess Nelson. I live at 4210 North 65th Ave. Here as a person of the neighborhood, on behalf of some of the others that had to work today that share our feelings as well. I'm one of the many concerned neighbors who have to be on constant guard for the safety of my family as well as my neighbors every time the Kino King gets approved to sell alcohol. I've lived here for almost eight years now and this is the fourth attempt now to try and make this environment work. The simple fact of the matter is that North Omaha, we have a major violence problem that the community wants dealt with and granting this liquor license is not the solution. Alcohol simply adds fuel to an existing fire. I have two young children and when the Kino King has been open, I lay in bed and wait to hear gunshots so that me and my wife can run down and get my babies out of bed in case stray bullets happen our way from fleeing Kino King patrons that have had too much fun at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. We should not have to live in fear every time the Kino King holds an event. When I get home from work, anywhere from midnight to 2:30 a.m., I see people gathering in the Kino King parking lot at the bottom of our street yelling and partying like they're at some kind of a sporting venue, not at the bottom of a peaceful neighborhood that is trying to sleep. This disturbing of the peace oftentimes spills up the street to our houses or parking spaces, my driveway, are much easier to obtain. Meanwhile, my yard makes for a perfect dumpster or toilet or even a loitering zone. The Kino King has tried to have security guards on duty and metal detectors, we were told. Neither has prevented the violence and the disturbances. The only way to help prevent these disturbances is to deny this liquor license. The Omaha Police Department distributed surveys to ask our neighborhood how they thought they could better serve our area in direct relation to the Kino King and the issues that come with it. Our answer was simply do not allow liquor at the Kino King. In closing, I would like to say that by granting a liquor license to this establishment, the community is going to experience even more devastating violence. Hopefully, our community leaders before us today, the council, can maybe see that it would be foolish to provide one more place for this kind of activity to thrive. Please keep our families and our neighborhoods safe. Please deny this liquor license today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. I will offer a brief time for two minutes. Yes, sir?
The problems I had were when we opened up the lounge in the lower.
Sir, would you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry, my name's Jeff Roethlisberger, Benson Kino. The problems everybody was referring to was I had a sports bar on the top and I had an unopened lounge in the basement. When I opened the lounge in the basement, that increased the number of people in the building pretty substantially. And then when people left, they're referring to things of having a big crowd. We're talking about a 250 limit, which was something that I was not willing to agree to in the past. I think even, I think Mr. Festerston first talked about a limit on the number of people. That was his idea originally. I'm not trying to say that's what he's supporting today. But when you limit to 250 and then you give them a reason not to leave, they're going to, it's going to be about maybe 100 people leaving at the end of the night, 75. And the benefits of having people gather far outweighs this, these inconveniences. And we had one shooting. I mean, the record's record. We had one shooting, guy shot at my door and that was in two years. And we have one stabbing in two years. That's the violence. That's the reported violence. I'm not trying to, and we've had no officers hurt at the Kino King. So, we don't have officers that are breaking up fights. And originally, the whole thing centered around, we knew there's going to be violence in the community. We just can't have officers hurt. And then it migrated to, we can't have a dangerous crowd leaving the Kino, the Kino King at the time. And I feel like I'm meeting that burden and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Andre Lewis, 346 Martin Avenue. I really genuinely feel what some of the neighbors are saying. But I live on Martin Avenue and I don't feel safe in my own neighborhood. And they sell liquor at the Walgreens and the BP, which I'll approve. So, should we be here shutting them down also? Because I don't feel safe in my neighborhood. You know, I have kids out here. But I'm also a person that has been shot. I've been to jail, I've done things. I'm trying to change my life. I have kids out here that I want to see grow up. And if I know what I've been through and what I'm trying to change and I believe in somebody who's trying to change, who also has had either passed with the building or anything. change, and I believe in somebody who's trying to change, who also has had either a pass with the building or anything else, you know, I understand, like I said, I understand, but anything can happen. Like I say, somebody, you invite somebody up to your house, and they're a victim of random gunfire. Is that your fault? But at the end of the day, they might feel like that because they was coming to see you, and you told them it's gonna be a safe environment, but you cannot control what happens. But what you can do is try to put in every step, along with you all, to make sure this happens for the safety and for the growth of the city. There's a lot of local entertainment and entertainers that are here. It is so bad that this young girl just set, and they put in the news that this girl just lied and said that she died just to get some kind of publicity. This is just yesterday in the news, and it got me very upset because I've been shot in the head, and I didn't ask for no publicity for something that I was trying to do. But here goes somebody that makes up something. But here's a man that's trying to do something. Yes, he has faults. He's had faults. We all have had faults. I mean, I don't think, either one of you are sitting up here having had any kind of faults. But all I'm asking y'all for to do is for to give the guy a chance, give the place a chance, give the idea a chance, because anything can happen at any time. I can walk right out here right now and get hit by a bus or a stray bullet. You never know. And that's all I would like to say.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
Mr. President, as council members know, this has been a source of great frustration because we worked on this, and we tried to make it work, but the fact is, it just doesn't work. It doesn't work for the neighborhood, and it doesn't work for the police department. And we can go back many years ago into some of the incidents at the facility, but as a reminder, or a refresher, I'll just go back through a couple of years of some examples. In September '09, we had a tavern report. In September, again in September, they were called to the City Council's Law Committee. In October of '09, there was a tavern report. On October 16th, there was a tavern report. On October 24th of '09, there was a tavern report. In November of '09, they were called back into the City Council's Law Committee. In December of '09, there was another tavern report. In March of 2010, the neighborhood filed a protest petition to long-form the renewal of the license, which the council eventually approved. And then it was, that was in May, and then following that in August, there was denial by the council with the renewal of their license of 2010. And then again, later 2010, there was an attempt to transfer the license to a different name, which was also rejected. And following up on the city council's actions in a pretty painstaking way to figure this out for the neighborhood, it did go to the state liquor commission, who has ultimate say on these licenses, and the liquor commission upheld those denials about a year ago. Mr. Mungard, if you would, Mr. Mungard was representing the city at the liquor commission on that renewal and that revocation, and I'd just like you, to give you a chance to explain why the state upheld that denial.
Tom Mungard, Deputy City Attorney. As you indicated, this goes back a number of years. Let's go back about 10 years. This location was operated under the name Cartier's by a different owner. It was operated at that time as a promotion, concert facility, dance hall, those types of things. There were several events there that generated into shootings, disruption of the neighborhood, police calls. As a result of that activity, Cartier's license was revoked by the city council, and that was upheld by the liquor control commission. Mr. Roethlisberger then bought the building and came in and asked for a liquor license there with first the assurance that he would operate simply as a social hall for weddings, receptions, and stuff like that. He got the liquor license under that representation. He did operate that in that fashion for a while. Occasionally, we also continued to have problems with people who rented his facility and used it for their events. He then came back to the council and got permission to go away from the social hall concept and go, operated as a bar and kino facility. The council gave him that permission based upon the representation that he would not have any promotions, dances, et cetera, stuff like that. Well, as you've indicated over a number, over a period of a couple of years, there were events there that then did generate police calls and tavern reports. Mr. Roethlisberger was brought before the liquor committee several times to discuss why he was holding what we thought were promotions and dances and the events contrary to the promises he had made. The liquor committee worked with Mr. Roethlisberger to try to come up with some way he could stay in business and not hold these events that caused problems to the neighborhood and to police. Ultimately, we were unable to find a way to do that, and as you say, in the fall of 2010, the city council recommended that the liquor control commission not renew his license. I went to the commission, presented evidence at that point, and basically gave them three issues, three reasons why we felt this, when this renewal was not justified. Those reasons all centered around the character and reputation and qualifications of Mr. Roethlisberger. I have given to you and placed in the record what is Page Six, the last page of the written letter brief that I submitted to the liquor control commission at that point. After I had discussed the evidence, I set out three questionable areas that the city felt was justification for not renewing the license. The first one, the question was whether the owner, Mr. Roethlisberger, was a person of good character, that is a qualification under Liquor Control Commission, Liquor Control Act. That generally means whether he will conduct his business in good faith and with honesty of purpose. That is, would he keep the promises made to the council and the commission? Was he a person who could be believed and depended upon? The city at that point told the commission, the answer to that question was, no, he was not. Secondly, we asked the commission whether he was a person who was willing to operate the business in compliance with the laws governing sale of alcohol. That is, would he operate the business in a manner in which there would not be disturbances and violations of law? I told the commission on your behalf, no, he would not. Third, we said that we asked whether the, Mr. Roethlisberger had shown that he would manage and control the activities on the premises. I told the commission on your behalf, no, he would not. The City of Omaha at that point requested that the commission not allow this license to be renewed. In December, on December 16th of 2010, the commission entered an order agreeing with the City of Omaha and finding that Mr. Roethlisberger was ineligible to hold the license because he was not an applicant of good character and reputation in the community. He was not feeling fit, willing, and able to properly provide the service, and that he would not conform, operate the business in a way that it would conform to all the provision requirements of the act, or that he would not, that he had not demonstrated that the type of management and control exercised over the premises would see that it was operated in conformance with the law. Those are four elements or qualifications stated in Liquor Control Commission, or Liquor Control Act. The commission found that Mr. Roethlisberger failed on each point. As a result of that, they did not renew his license in about a year ago, December of 2010.
I believe that was unanimous vote by the commission.
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, I mean, I appreciate the approach here and the community partners that we're trying to work with, and I certainly support enough is enough and what their mission is and what they're trying to accomplish. But when you have a troubled location like this and some troubled ownership, given the testimony there and the record, there has to be trust established with the neighborhood and with the police to move forward on something like this, and there obviously just isn't that trust. And so, I'm not willing, as representative of that district, to put the neighbors through those issues again. And in fact, some of the most convincing testimony I've had in the last week or two since this was renewed, or came up again as a proposal, were from neighbors who suggested that, boy, in the last year or so, since there hasn't been a liquor license there, there's been a marked improvements in their neighborhood and incidents they've, and not had incidents they've witnessed in the past. So, to me, that's a pretty convincing record. It's a convincing testimony by neighbors that we shouldn't be doing this today, and I'll move denial and hope to get a second from my colleagues.
Ms. Stothard?
Just a quick comment. I think, I believe it was 2006 when Mr. Roethlisberger was first granted the license, and I think it was granted because there wasn't any history. And now today, as Mr. Mungard just explained in detail, there certainly is a history. And to add on to what Councilman Festerson just said, I really don't think that there's any evidence that this gentleman is capable of controlling his business and controlling the violence. There is a lack of trust. There were promises that were broken. I don't think he's someone we can depend on. And so, in my opinion, there's, there's really not a lot of change. It's the same facility. It's the same manager. It's the same owner, and there's really no evidence that anything will change. And with that.
Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of clarifications and then a couple, a comment or two. First of all, it has been stated, we had a news conference today recently to talk about, to talk just specifically about the violence that's going on in our community and how we're addressing that collectively with a number of different organizations' efforts and support by police, support by neighborhood associations and others. And so, we had a news conference, and the one thing I want to correct, two things I want to correct. One is, Mr. Roethlisberger, and I think one of your opponents on the other side said that there was an increase in violence, and that's just not true. There is, there is, there is the same sort of trend of homicides that you see, but most gun violence, where all of the other forms of violence are starting to trend downward, and they've been trending downward for the last two or three years. And we need to begin to tell that story as well, that violence is trending downward, not up, in the North Omaha community. Secondly, someone made the assertion that this council approved the BP station on 30th and Martin. We turned that down. They got their license when they went to the liquor control commission, but this council unanimously voted against the BP station on 30th and Martin having a license. So, I wanted to correct those two things. Just a couple of comments. One is very difficult for me. I'm, I'm not going to support this, to be honest with you, upfront, but, you know, it is a problem because, you know, we need to eliminate some of the empty buildings in our community, but we need to do it in a fashion that's responsible and reasonable. In this particular instance, I would imagine that even if we approved it here, the liquor control commission, based on testimony and what they've done in the past, would probably turn it down anyway. So, I wouldn't be supportive of it. I would be more supportive if there were a new group of individuals. We had a conversation once about someone opening what would primarily be a restaurant there, and that met with the approval of the neighbors. And it was important for us to move forward with that when that didn't happen, to make it a liquor, to make it pretty much a liquor establishment again, in my judgment, only invites problems. And while I'm not, while I don't like to see empty buildings, and while I know it's essential for there to be opportunities and organizations for specifically people of color to have a place to go, who are older to have fun, this is not the, this is not the venue that I think is going to work for that. So, I'm not going to be supportive of it at this point in time. But I did want to correct those two statements that were made and, you know, give my reasons for not being in support of it at this point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Roll call. Gray?
No.
Well, this is a motion to deny.
Motion to deny? Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson? Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. It's denied on a 7-0 vote. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order. The public hearings on agenda items number 18 through 26 were held on December the 6th, 2011. Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. They're all passed, 7 to 0. The public hearings on agenda items number 27 through 34 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself, by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Gurnett? Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. They're adopted 7 to 0. Resolutions, item number 35, resolution attached, 1501 Jackson LLC Tax Center Refinancing Redeveloped Project Plan with the conversion and redevelopment of three surface parking lots into the downtown Omaha into a new five-story multifamily housing development of 79 market-rate apartment units in a commercial bay and secure parking structures hereby approved. Public hearing on agenda item number 35 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This is a TIF redevelopment project at 15th and Jackson, and it will bring on 79 new apartment, market-rate apartment units at that location. There is a one-bay, commercial bay at the corner of that location. This particular project will bring on the market-rate apartments as called for in the downtown master plan. It does meet the Nebraska Community Development Law for TIF, and I will answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. Adopted 7 to 0. Item number 36, resolution attached, NODO Zesto Development LLC Tax Center Refinancing Redeveloped Project Plan for the Zesto project located at 1203 Mike Fahy Street is hereby approved. Public hearing on agenda item number 36 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon again, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This particular project is, in keeping with the, some of the College World Series tradition, brings the Zestos Restaurant into the north downtown area, but it brings it in an urban format to make it a two-story facility that allows for retail in addition to the Zestos Restaurant, as well as a drive-in. This particular project will help with the vitality in the north downtown area. If there are any additional questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Gurnett? Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. And Jerem passes a second time. Potential conflict of interest. It's adopted 601, passing. Item number 37, resolution attached, Park School Apartment Tax Center Refinancing Redeveloped Project Plan for the property located at 1320 South 29th Street is hereby approved. Public hearing on agenda item number 37 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This particular project is located at 29th and, excuse me, not 29th, but yeah, 29th and off of Woolworth Avenue. And this particular project is the rehabilitation of a historic project or property. This property had received TIF and some other city funds to rehab this project about 20 years ago in late 89. It was under completely different ownership and management at that particular time. It was allowed to run down. I had an opportunity to take a, do a site visit with the new owner of this particular project to see some of the conditions of the units, and they are in deplorable condition. It is not our, our policy to allow TIF to be reused on a project that had received TIF in the past, but due to some of our efforts in that Park Avenue area, the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association, to help revitalize that area, as you're aware of, the Park Avenue Development projects that are going on, rehab of those apartments that are going on to the north of this particular project, as well as the historic status of this particular property. It is on the National Register of Historic Properties. It is also an opportunity for us to continue to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing. This particular project is not market rate. It is low-income housing tax credits. So, the decision was made to allow this project to receive TIF again under the new management and ownership. If you have any other questions, I can certainly answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Gary and I are probably old enough to remember when it got tipped the first time, and maybe Dr. Thompson might remember it as well, but I remember covering it. And I remember when it was, when it was tipped the first time around with, with the old ownership. And I guess my question is going to be, how do we secure this time, making sure that the new owners and managers of this are going to, you know, do what is right by, you know, the property, more specifically by the TIF financing that they get, so that this sort of thing doesn't happen again?
Well, I think we have a pretty good relationship with this particular developer. and owner. They have already done some TIF projects that we have very good confidence in. We are also willing to institute where we will, specifically for TIF projects, re-inspect or inspect those on a more regular basis than we do any other TIF projects.
Okay. Bridget, what would happen if ownership?
Yeah, do we, I was, do we get our money out of it the first time?
Did we get our money back, you mean?
Yeah, do we get it back, or did we, did we lose out on that deal?
No, I, I don't believe we lost out. I mean, the TIF paid off.
TIF paid off, okay.
Yes, the TIF paid off.
Okay, that's what we're, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Thank, and so, this time, we're going to be more, we're going to be more vigilant. We're going to expect more and do more as they, as they move forward and then even after they finish.
Right. And also, what we have decided to do in our TIF guidelines that we've updated is, and granted, we know this is a case-by-case situation, because, again, this particular project is in an area we want to see revitalized, we made that decision to go ahead and allow TIF. So, we made that decision this time, and realize that could happen again with some other area that maybe we decide it is very important to continue to revitalize that community. But our, we have put in our policy internally for TIF that it, once you receive TIF, that you cannot come back for TIF for thirty years. And the understanding and expectation is, for the first fifteen years, that's the, the maximum term for TIF anyway. So, then fifteen years beyond that, the expectation is that you're, that owner is managing that property and keeping that property up. So, that's another safeguard that we've tried to put in place.
Bridget, what would happen if the ownership changed?
They're still governed by the redevelopment agreement that we have. They have, if, if it changes, it has to be, change by assignment, and that it goes through our law department. So, they're governed by the same, they're under the same compliance as the redevelopment agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. President. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, this project is in the District Three, my, the district I represent, and just a few meetings ago, when we were talking about code inspections and fees for re-inspections, I believe I, I pointed and directed my colleagues here to the Twenty-Ninth Street corridor between Leavenworth and Martha Street. I would, I would put that street and that section up against anybody's districts in terms of who has the most code violation files going in, in such a dense neighborhood. And that, that may be, if not the, the most heavily monitored area in terms of code violation active files that, that I've seen in the city. And if you pull it up on the GIS mapping, you'll see just red. And then, when you zoom way in, it's just property after property after property. So, when Bridget says this is an area in need of rehabilitation, that, that is an understatement, to say the least. And when she says that their policies have changed in terms of tightening up these agreements with the redevelopment companies in terms of complying with TIF, they now have in them specific language saying you must not have code violations, you must maintain the properties to code. So, they have enforcement mechanisms present. I've seen them. Actually, in other files, where it's been brought to my attention, that that is in fact one of our enforcement hammers to hold these developers accountable. And so, I have the utmost confidence in you. I question, though, whether on this particular site, you know, hopefully, there's a lot of other money involved, because I see a hundred and twenty-three thousand for TIF, and, and that in and of itself, in terms of what might be eligible for TIF expenses on the site, isn't, to me, all that impressive as to, don't expect a lot unless there's a lot of private money besides this available. And this particular street is on one of my regular recurring jogging routes, and, and it, there's a lot of trash there. The yard isn't kept up in the summer, the, the building itself isn't, sometimes you see the broken windows that don't get repaired for a long, long time. And I just want you to know, the planning department to know, the developer to know, if they're here or watching, that it's something I will be watching. And if you're not in compliance, and I, and I get complaints, or I observe them myself, I'll be the first to, to try to have the law department enforce revocation of this agreement for the breach. So, I wish some luck. The area does need help, a lot of help, and really, this nominal amount in terms of, of TIF is a small step in the right direction. Thanks.
Ms. Stothard?
Bridget, just a general question. As far as TIF goes in state statute, is there a limit to the amount of TIF projects that we can approve?
We are, by the state statute, the Nebraska Community Development Law, it limits us in terms of acres, the amount of acres that can be blighted for the city. But in terms of the amount of dollars in TIF that can be expended, I am not aware of anything like that. There, it's, it's only, and that's why we have our guidelines to help us determine the amount of TIF that is, is actually, that project can support. And we work with the county assessors to help determine that.
But there is a limit on the number of acres that can be blighted?
Correct. And that's thirty-five percent of the city's total acres that can be blighted.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Bridget, the, the rule that talks about thirty years, fifteen you pay off, and then fifteen you wait before you apply again, is that new, or are we, or did we always have that?
No, it's, it is new. This is with our updated TIF guidelines that we are putting in place. That was something that I felt we should at, at least have internally.
Okay.
So, that others don't think that this is a window to now just come back for any TIF that maybe received TIF in the past.
And that's something that didn't necessarily have to go through council?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
We need a motion.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-eight, resolution attached Roseland Theater Apartment Tax Center Refinancing Redevelopment Project Plan for the project located at forty-nine thirty-two South Twenty-Four Street is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This particular project is located on, in the south Omaha area, the South Twenty-Fourth Street Business District. This is a project that is also done by the same developer as item number thirty-seven. It's Central States Development Corporation. They are the, going to be the new owner of this particular project, and they will bring in their management. This particular project is similar situation where it had been rundown, and my understanding and what I've learned is a lot of the clientele was not comfortable coming forth and, and making complaints. And we know anything that gets on the code radar is complaint-driven. So, the project, property just deteriorated, and I believe the prior owner may have gone into bankruptcy or had some other financial difficulty. So, this particular owner, Central States Development, has come on board to take this project and rehabilitated. This project has two commercial bays on the main floor and then seventeen apartment units. This TIF will cover the rehabilitation of the apartment units, as well as the garage structure and some structural components of that building. It does involve a historic building that is on the National Register of Historic Places or National Registry. It also is in an area that we have already invested millions of dollars to revitalize, and we want to make sure that that area remains revitalized and, and a very vibrant area. And it involves providing decent, safe, and sanitary housing to individuals, and this is low-income housing tax credits. So, with that, we felt that it was appropriate to go ahead and allow TIF to be used again on this project with the same caveat of, after it is used, it would not be used again for thirty years. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Motion to approve.
Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett? Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-nine, resolution that the contract with Anderson Excavating for the Leavenworth Lift Station Replacement Contract Number One Site Preparation is hereby approved, aids in communication from the Valley Corporation.
The public hearing on agenda item number thirty-nine was held on December the sixth.
Motion to approve.
I'd like to call up the Public Works representative, please, and give us your recommendation and, and your reason for that.
Thank you. My name is Heather Tippi Pierce, Omaha Public Works, and we would, we, the Public Works Department, would like to reiterate and continue our recommendation that the contract for OPW five-two-one-nine-nine CSO, being Leavenworth Lift Station Replacement Contract One, be awarded to Anderson Excavating. This is a contract that is the first in a series. It is a demolition contract, and in reviewing the bid documentation, we feel that Anderson Excavating has the lowest and best bid, being that Anderson correctly and completely bid to the specifications required at the time of bid. And I'm here if you have any other issues or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallid, would you care to make a statement?
Yes, my name is Warren Widded. I'm with Leaven Widded Law Firm, sixty-four fifty-seven Francis Street. I'm here on behalf of Valley Corporation, one of the unsuccessful bidders on this project. I have with me Matt Bevington, who is the president and sole shareholder of the Valley Corporation, and I also have with me the project estimator and engineer, Rob, if I were, I'm having a...
Senior moment.
It's a parry moment, is what it is. But anyway, we are here for the purpose of raising two issues. First of all, we believe that the bid submitted by Valley Corporation, while not submitted on the form that the city suggests it should have been submitted on, was still responsive. And in, in order to understand this, you need to understand the full process. This project has been bid twice. The first time, all bidders were rejected on the basis that the bid specifications submitted into the bidders were incorrect and needed to be corrected. Valley Corporation submitted a bid of approximately six hundred and ten thousand dollars on the bid form. That is the same as the bid form that we're talking about here. That, that was the low bid. It was rejected. The city then elected to rebid the project, and I will get into the specifics of the inconsistencies and ambiguities in the documents, but again, Valley submitted a low bid of five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, including the item set forth in Addendum One and its other construction costs. That item, the substantive change that Addendum One made was to require that dewatering issues be addressed. And that was a specific line item on the bid form that, that Heather speaks of, and it was also a specific line item included in the initial bid submitted by Valley Corporation and included in other construction costs. So, as a consequence, the numbers in the Valley Construction Bid that were submitted in response to the rebid are comparable and comparable to the, to those of the other bidders, and it should be accepted. But, so my first suggestion would be that the council reject the suggestion that the bid of Anderson Corporation, Anderson Excavating be accepted, and to accept a bid of Valley Corporation. I might point out at this point that the bid that was submitted, the apparent low bid by Valley Corporation, was five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, as a pair to, as compared to the seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which is the bid that Anderson is before you now. Now, the real question is, how does this, how did this confusion occur? Well, the confusion occurred in the documents, as they were submitted to the bidders. The bid specification book, bid on, book on the initial bid contained a bid document. That was submitted under architect certification date of September twenty-third, or September ninth, excuse me. That requirement was changed by Addendum One, which carried a date of October twelfth. So, when the initial bid was submitted, the most recent bid document in the hands of the bidders was that bid document that was attached to the, the addendum. At that point in time, the city elected to reject all bids and put the, put the project out again. This time, we had a bid document with the date of October twenty-sixth. The bid document that was submitted made the changes that the city deemed necessary to address the small business issues, but also re-numerated, or re-designated all of the documents, rebid. The, that bid specification book had in it a bidding document that carried a date of October twenty-first, and it said in the footer, rebid. When my client sat down to fill out the forms with the numbers, which is always, as you know, done at the eleventh hour, they had before them two forms. One was the form that was contained in Addendum One, which contained the five line items that Heather was speaking of, which had not been changed in any way since the initial submittal. And the other was the bid document that was contained in the rebid specifications that carried a date of October twenty-first and said in the footer, rebid. Looking at those two documents, a reasonable person could easily decide, I must submit the most recent document. That's the document that was submitted by my client. We believe that, now, there, there were four bidders that were submitted, four bids that were submitted in response to the rebid. Of the four, two submitted on the incorrect form. So, this wasn't an error that was only made by Valley. Also, this is not their first rodeo. So, these people do this all the time, and there should not be any confusion, once you get to your numbers, of how you actually submit it. In this case, there clearly was a situation where reasonable minds could have differed as to the correct form, and the form that was submitted was the one that was denominated as the most current form. Now, this morning at the pre-council meeting, Heather suggested that at the time that we picked up the second set of bid documents, there was a cover sheet which addressed this issue. My first observation is, we do not believe that cover sheet was a part of the bid documents. We believe that cover sheet was contained in the electronic documents, but I make that only as an assertion because there's no way for us to prove or verify that. But we do not believe that form was submitted to us. But even if it was submitted to us, it is our position that it doesn't provide the enlightenment that it suggested that it should provide. All it says is it designates, designates the project and says rebid. And what that says to a contractor is that we've got to look at this in connection with the submission of our bid. It doesn't say it overrides the amended bid specs. It doesn't say anything such as that. It simply says rebid. So, it is our position here, A, that the bid submitted by Valley Corporation in response to the bid specs was low by seventeen percent and was responsive. And we would suggest to the council that they can reject the bid of Anderson Excavating and accept the Valley, the Valley bid. I believe that there even is enough room in Heather's memo this morning to suggest that while it would be appropriate to accept the bid of Anderson as submitted, it would not be inappropriate otherwise. Now, I had, this is a little editorializing, I'm not trying to attribute to Heather more than she said, but she did say it would not be unjust, I think were her terms. The, that's our first suggestion, but if the council can't get there, we believe that this was ambiguous enough that this bidder is entitled to try again. Now, you know, that, that, and when you look at it in there, two of the four that submitted in, on what would be, they would be deemed, deemed to be incorrect, and when you look at this kind of a dollar difference, this bidder is prepared to go forward as quickly as the publication can be made, so the delay in the commencement of the project would not be material. And this is just the right thing to do. And so, I'm asking the council to, A, accept the bid of Valley Corporation, but if that's not possible, and you can't see your way clear to do that, we suggest that all bids be rejected and the project be rebid. And I'll answer any questions. And I do have, as I said, the principles of Valley Corporation, who can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, counselor. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The motion to adopt, seven to zero. Or, six to one, I'm sorry. Seven to zero. President, City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda item forty through forty-two shall be held on third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item forty-three, ordinance to clear necessity of acquiring property for the purpose of reconstructing Hundred and Second and West Maple Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-three begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item forty-four, ordinance to clear necessity of acquiring private property for the purpose of reconstructing Hundred and Eighth Street, L to M Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-four begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any... Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Item 45, ordinance to accept the bid of Navarro Land Landscape, Nebraska Best, Reese Enterprises, for ground maintenance mowing of city right-of-ways. Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 45 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We'll take Item 46, seven and eight. They're all acquiring property. 46 is ordinance to clarify necessity of appropriating 3322 Blondo Street and 3361 and a half Patrick Avenue. 47 is 4146 Grant Street and 4206 Patrick Avenue, and 48 is 4303 Patrick Avenue, all for implementation of the consolidated plan. Public hearing on Agenda Items Number 46, 47, and 48 begin now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Item 49, ordinance approved agreement for the sale of city-owned property and entered into an agreement with Santa Frances House. The property located at 1145 through 1411 North 18th Street for the Development Support Service Center for Homeless Persons. Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Item 50, ordinance filed for the City of Omaha shall transfer city-owned property pursuant to an agreement with Venture LLC, 2601, 2617, and 2619 North 16th Street, for the development of commercial building. Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 50 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Item 51, ordinance to approve the execution of professional service agreement with Neighborhood Center for Greater Omaha to provide administrative services and development navigation protocol for the Re-Energize Program. Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 51 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Item 52, ordinance to amend Section 21-7 to permit advertising in ball fields and tennis complexes, city-operated indoor ice arenas, to add restrictions on such advertising and require guidelines to be established for such advertising. A is communications to the Parks Director. Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 52 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Barb Valenski, Mayor's Office. The Budget Efficiency and Savings Team, called BEST, was created by the mayor. It was composed of over 15 city managers in the various city departments. Brooke Bench and Kim Harmon from Parks participated as members of BEST. BEST produced a report in July of 2010 with 11 priorities. Advertising was one of those priorities. Clearly, the citizens don't want any more taxing. However, they really want good services produced by the city in their sports complexes and arenas. Thus, with limited resources to cover all our needs, we need to diversify our revenue sources. Today, we are requesting that you approve an ordinance that expands advertising beyond golf to ball fields and tennis complexes and indoor ice arenas, utilizing the city's competitive bidding process. We project we can generate almost $300,000 in our first full year. In closing, we believe this advertising ordinance will allow us to produce significant revenue to help us address unmet needs in our sports complexes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Melinda Pearson, Parks Director for the City of Omaha. The prohibition against advertising in parks has been on the books for years. For the last five years, golf has allowed advertising, and we have indeed generated some funds, and I think that's been used as a model for what we're proposing. We are looking to expand the golf exemption into sports facilities, including ice, baseball, and softball, as well as the tennis facilities. The revenue that would be generated through the advertising would go directly back into those facilities. It would not go into the general fund. And guidelines would be developed for appropriate use of advertising, and what that advertising would not only save, but how it would be promoted, and then that would go through the Parks Advisory Board for their approval and review. It is our intention to hire a professional advertising agency to help establish the best and most tasteful way to advertise to the user groups in these facilities. We want to limit the way that they advertise, and I can assure you that we are going to look seriously at no advertising on trees, on natural amenities, and on fences. We are looking to generate non-tax dollars to help improve these sports facilities, and we would look for your approval. Thank you. And I think, I just wanted to say, Brooke Bench is here from Parks Maintenance Facilities. Many of you know him. He's the manager of all of the Parks Facilities, and he is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Melinda, could you repeat?
Yes.
A facility like the Moylan Ice Rink in northwest Omaha, because that's kind of a public-private venture, how would the advertising, advertising arrangement be handled with a facility like that? Would they share in the advertising revenue?
Yes, they would. We have, we have many agreements among our sports facilities. They're all slightly different. Same with our softball and baseball complexes. So what we would do is, the city then would set up, the city parks would set up the, the best advertising practices, and then we would work with Moylan to establish how that would be presented, and then the proceeds that were generated would be shared between them and the city. And we, we haven't got down to details yet on how that would be done.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other proponents?
And I also want to introduce, and she's not going to introduce, Carrie Vasquez, would you stand? She is the new manager for Citywide Sports for the city. She also manages the ice rink.
Is somebody else here? A proponent?
Hi, my name's Brian Sauer. I'm the general manager at Moylan Iceplex. I'm in favor of this ordinance because of the additional revenue stream it could provide for the ice rink. Ice rinks are very expensive. They're expensive to build, they're expensive to operate, and they're expensive to maintain. Our particular ice rink is 15 years old. It's the newest one in town. So it's, oftentimes, I'm forced to make decisions on what I can fix, what I have to wait on, and if I can replace it with something more efficient. I have to, a lot of times, decide if I have enough money to do that, if I should wait. I anticipate, if some additional revenue is made, if this ordinance is passed, to do upgrades such as lighting, insulation, chiller upgrades, which would help our efficiency. Our, our electric bill or utility bill is $18,000 a month. So any additional savings that I can, that we can be made would be very helpful for the rink. Flooring fixtures are also things that need to be replaced, because we are open a lot. We have a lot of people come through, and so it has aged. This ordinance is going to benefit everybody who uses the facility, and I would argue that most people who use ice rinks are used to seeing advertising in ice rinks. It's very unusual for an ice rink not to have it, just because of the nature of a rink, which is very seasonal. It's hard to make money, so most rinks have to have advertising to make, to make it work. So I've had a lot of patrons come to me, ask me why I don't have advertising, and I tell them it's the law. So, that's what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard?
Thanks. Could Melinda come back up, please?
Melinda Pearson, Parks Department.
And you did a really good job explaining the ordinance, but I do think it's important just to reemphasize a few points publicly. This is about our public facilities, so it's about the, the baseball fields, the tennis, the indoor ice arenas. It's not about advertising in the parks.
That's right. That's absolutely right. The, the concept here is, it's kind of a user fee, so we're going to advertise to the users of those facilities, and the advertising, it will be focused inward. So while most of these facilities are inside parks, the advertising will be focused inward. So someone who is walking down a trail, or going through a park, or playing ball, will not see the advertising.
So otherwise, like the baseball fields, if you're driving down the road, you're not going to see it. It'll be faced inwards. And you did mention, but I think it's worth to stress again, you're going to prohibit on fences?
Yes.
And on trees also?
Right.
And then, when you estimated the amount of revenue that it could possibly generate, did you take into consideration administrative costs? When you, because I'm sure you're going to have to go out and you're going to have to somehow arrange for these advertisers and collect and whatever, so is that figured into this?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
In the 2013, that's the first full year, so in 2012, it's still a little, we don't expect to gain the full amount in 2012. We do in 2013. Alice Deppenbaugh, the Parks Department accountant, is here, so she could answer that, but yes, we did take into account some administrative expenses.
Okay, all right. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a similar question. I also share the interest of what this can do for the department, and in particular, it's having the money go to the specific entities and facilities that they're involved with, I think is appealing, too. And I think it's become increasingly commonplace to have this kind of advertising with cities, schools, and certainly on private facilities, so I think this has some merit. I just wanted to make sure, though, that we weren't opening the door to something greater we weren't anticipating, and so really, a question for Mr. Kratz that we discussed this morning a little bit, which is, in doing, in taking this action, we're confident we can limit the advertising only to these facilities and not open ourselves up to proliferation of advertising, like in the parks, or even sometimes cities mention police cruisers or other things like that. By passing this ordinance, we wouldn't be subject to that line of thinking, would we?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. No, you would not. You're passing it just for the specific areas that have been outlined in the ordinance. Now, it doesn't mean that some council in the future could decide to expand it to those other items that you've mentioned.
And at times, when this has come up in the past, there's been questions about, is this truly allowed under state law? But obviously, it's your interpretation that it is.
And our interpretation is that there's some case law existing within the United States, not in Nebraska, that indicate that you should not allow it, because you have, you're essentially using public property for private gain with advertising. There's some other cases that do allow it, so the opinions are split. There's nothing specific in state law, one way or the other. It's, I'm simply referring to case law, some old case law throughout the country.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Jerem?
Yes, if Melinda can come up, and Barb, I want to first commend you for your efforts to be innovative in trying to get alternative funds other than tax dollars to support your operations, and I want to thank you, Barb, for your efforts, and Melinda, continue to applaud you for your efforts. I mean, since you've been on the watch, you started a Parks Foundation, which is charged with helping fund operations or projects for the parks through private dollars, and that's wonderful that you're doing that. This is an extension of trying to be creative, so I wanted to thank you for that, and thank you too, Barb. So, if you want to look down, I have some other things to say.
Thank you.
You know, as, as we see our community and the citizens of Omaha continue to express their desire for services and quality parks and equality library in recent years because of financial strains up to the city in terms of meeting pension obligations and rising healthcare costs and other things, Parks Department and Library Department, I think, are the unintended victims of tighter budget times, because they're often taxed to the limits and brink of what they're capable of continuing to provide in terms of services, cutting back on mowing, going years without equipment, elimination in the past of the forestry division, strains on, on the library a couple of years ago, trying to save the Florence Library because of the tough budgetary times, and so those are directly the result of other demands, financial demands placed upon the appropriations that the mayor can, you know, put in different places, and then we, as the appropriating body, have to make tough decisions of where the money goes. And when you have, you know, healthcare costs escalating in the past few years at 14%, and, you know, for this coming year, almost $56 million, and you have these pension funds that need to be funded for police and fire, your departments unfortunately have borne the brunt of those responsibilities to fund. So I think it's refreshing that you found other ways to try to find revenue. This is one of them, and I hope that people appreciate the great efforts that you are employing to try to keep the quality up with less money or flat money, and I, for one, wanted to thank you for doing that, and tell you how much I appreciate that, and hope that the people in Omaha appreciate what you're doing. Now, in terms of the ordinance itself, as I noted this morning, there, there was this area, I think, that might be considered for amendment, and then Melinda said, too, one of the restrictions that would be in the ordinance was prohibition on any advertising that might depict weapons or ammunition, and I think we'd need to tweak that a little bit. In terms of allowing the depiction, perhaps, of police or military officers that might have their uniformed equipment on and be in an advertisement, as well as consider, the city does operate a trap and ski shooting range down within Seymour Smith Park, the Harrier Coke Shooting Range, and it might be a natural funding source there, too, although we could just couch this in terms of generally allowing for such advertising in a city-owned shooting range, should Harrier Coke Range continue to operate or migrate to some other location in the city. So, thank you for your efforts again, and I might be, you know, if you can come up and work with me and staff, perhaps Dean Miller, then you and I can meet and put something together to accomplish that slight adjustment. That'd be appreciated.
Thank you.
Mr. Gurnett?
When it was mentioned during the testimony that the money that would be generated by this advertising would go back to these particular facilities for improvements, I know that there are some out there that follow council activities closely that are probably jumping through their TV sets right now, because they're under the impression that every dollar that we generate, or the funds that we generate, goes into the general fund. And I just would like to set those minds at ease, because I remember back, since 2001, prior to the arrival of our new finance director, that was the matriarch statement that every finance director made, that money that comes in, that's where it goes. It's not given back to individual departments and things like that. That's where the money goes. So if the finance director could just kind of give us a 25 words or less explanation of that, it would be appreciated. So everybody out there in TV land can understand, and those that are still left here with us.
Pam Speckert, Finance Director. Just so I'm clear, this particular ordinance will provide fees or advertising revenue that will be associated with a particular location that is generating the revenue, and it will go into that specific enterprise fund, not into the general fund, to support those facilities. Does that answer your question?
So that would be the similar way that the current Golf Enterprise Fund is, is being currently managed.
That's correct. So if the Parks Department generates advertising revenue from the golf facilities, it will go into the golf fund. If she does it for the tennis, it will go into the tennis fund, and to that effect. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item 53, ordinance to adopt a new Article V of Chapter 21 to entitle park development fees, implementing park development fees as adopted in the city's 2010 update of the master plan for the Omaha suburban park system. Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 53 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-four, ordinance to transfer unencumbered general fund appropriations two thousand and eleven budget city Omaha for the purpose of providing funding for personnel services.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-four begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Ms. Spacrotella, just, I, I would strongly recommend that we add a footnote to the contingency reserve fund after we transfer this five point three million dollars into the reserve fund, that it's the intention of the council that these funds will be used for the unfunded pension liability on the police and fireman's pension plan.
Pam Spacrotella, Finance Director. That's fine. We'll make sure it's in the budget document.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-five, ordinance to implement Benson Business Improvement District for the purpose of approving a street lighting replacement and upgrade project in the Benson area of Omaha.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-five begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the City Council, my name is Shelley Keel, three nineteen South Fifty-third Street. I'm advisor to the Benson Business Improvement District, and I want to tell you that the BID is very excited to have the opportunity to enter into this agreement with the city to replace the street lights in downtown Benson, and in conjunction with the city's construction of a new entryway to Benson this coming spring, and some of the exciting things that are happening with retail and entertainment and cultural arts efforts in the district, I think we are doing some very, very economically positive things. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Liz Moldenhauer. I live at two three four five North Sixty-fourth Street. I am in support of this ordinance. I'm also very excited about the wonderful changes that are occurring in Benson, and I believe this is, be a wonderful asset to our security in Benson. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This is just a public hearing today, but I did want to, of course, lend my support to this item that we've all been working on together, and as, as was noted, this would totally replace the, an upgrade, the lighting between Fifty-Ninth and Sixty-third Street in downtown Benson, as one of our many projects there to, to enhance that business district and promote the new business development we're seeing there. For a sec, reasons for sure, because it'll replace some of the current older lighting with some acorn lights that are LED and enhance the lighting in the area, but then a companion piece to this too is increasing some lighting in the alleyways, all of which will enhance the ambiance, but certainly public safety in the area too. And, and, and using this simple amendment to the BID mechanism we've adopted, it allows the BID to pay for this, so this is not city money. The city initiates construction with OPPD, it's paid back by the BED over ten years with interest. So it's, it's the BID mechanism working as intended to fund a project in Benson and is unique, unique in that fashion. Add two other things I wanted to note. Mr. Stube, it was mentioned just now, another project we're working on together, which is the entrance to Fifty-Eighth Northwest Radio, and we've been working hard to get that project moving forward, but we believe it will now occur in spring of two thousand and twelve. And that's separate from this project, but that will also include a placement of lighting on that corner. So when we're doing both these projects, we just wanted to make sure that we're coordinating how that looks, and that that construction project will also use the lighting we're now going to replace along the rest of that stretch. Is that something you can confirm today?
Bob Stube, Public Works. You're correct, there is a project, it's kind of the entryway into the Benson area off of Northwest Radio Highway. There's no question that we will coordinate with this particular project relative to the lights. We do have standard lights that are typical, such as whether Cobra Heads or Hockey Pucks or things like that, but we will try to coordinate that particular project with this particular project.
Great. Thank you. And then, last thing I wanted to say, he's not here today, but the Chairman of the Benson Business Improvement District, Greg Born, has been a great champion for Benson and been Chairman of this group as long as I can remember. He's fulfilling his current term now through the end of the year, and will step down and will have another appointment there to keep all that momentum going, but I just wanted to thank him publicly for all his work and all he's done for Benson, and I would urge approval of this next week. Thank you.
Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda items fifty-six through fifty-eight shall be held on the second reading. Additional resolution, resolution authorizing Law Department to execute a mutual agreement with Cox Communications Omaha LLC to extend until March nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, the date by which Cox's proposed, or formal proposal for renewal of its cable television franchise must either be accepted or preliminary denied by city.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-nine begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Chairman of the Board of Equalizations supports approval of plans and assessments with adjustments made at the regular meeting held December sixth.
Motion to approve. Second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Gernat? Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It is...